I'd like to call the city council meeting of Monday, August 16th, 2021 to order. If I can have the city clerk, please call the roll.
Mayor Flores.
Present.
Deputy Mayor Tharp.
Present.
Councilmember Noble.
Present.
Councilmember Dugo. Councilmember Pierce. Councilmember Busque.
Here.
Mayor, we have a quorum.
All rise to the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic which is standing in one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'm gonna die. All right, do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
Motion.
Second.
Second. I have a motion made by Councilmember Dugo, second by Councilmember Busque, all in favor?
Aye.
That motion carries five zero. At this time, I'd like to open comments from the public for agenda items only. Anyone wishing to speak, please come forward to the podium, state your name and address for the record. All right, seeing none, moving on to special business. Actually, there's none tonight, so moving on to our consent agenda. Do I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
All right, have a motion made by Councilmember Busque, second by Councilmember Noble, all in favor?
Aye.
Uh, Councilmember Pierce? I can't hear you, okay. Uh, that motion carries five zero. Moving on to our regular agenda today, we have a public hearing for ordinance 2021-111. If I can have our city clerk, please read the ordinance by title.
Ordinance 2021-111, second reading, amending the city's charter without referendum as authorized by Florida statute to adjust the qualifying dates to accommodate the supervisor of elections, providing for severability, the repeal of laws in conflict, codification, and ineffective date.
And today we have our city clerk presenting, Quintella Moore.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. First reading of this ordinance took place on August 2nd, 2021. It passed by a 5-0 vote to change the election qualifying dates per the recommendation of the supervisor of elections. Since that time, no changes have been made to the ordinance title or any of the body. Staff recommends approval of ordinance 2021-11.
Are there any comments or questions from the council?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve ordinance 2021-11.
Second.
Before I entertain any motions, I'm gonna open it up.
Public hearing.
Open it up for the public. At this point in time, I'd like to open a public hearing for ordinance 2021-111. If there's anyone wishing to speak in favor of the ordinance, please come forward, state your name and address for the record. Seeing none, anyone wishing to speak in opposition of the ordinance, please come forward, state your name and address for the record. All right, seeing none, public hearing is now closed.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve ordinance 2021-11, second reading.
Second.
All right, I have a motion made by Councilmember Pierce, second by Councilmember Busque, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, that motion carries five zero. Moving on to ordinance 2021-09 for first reading. If I can have our city clerk, please read the ordinance by title.
Ordinance 2021-09, first reading, adopting Chapter 4 Buildings and Building Regulations, Section 4 through 5 as the Unsafe Building Abatement Code, providing for purpose, authority, establishment of a district, definitions, enforcement, emergencies, abatement, collection of costs, appeals, and other purposes, providing for conflicts, severability, codification, and ineffective date.
All right, and tonight we have our Director of Planning, Building Planning and Engineering, Kara Ferris.
Hi, good evening. Tonight you have before you first reading of ordinance 2021-09, Unsafe Building Abatement Code. What we are doing is we're taking, actually building, putting another tool in our toolbox for taking care of issues within the city, and this is specifically for demolition of unsafe buildings within the city. So, right now, what we're doing is we're providing a process. We could do this through amendment of Section 116 of the Florida Building Code, but we're actually putting it into our code as Section 4-5. We're establishing a district. We're putting definitions together relative to enforcement. Uh, we're also providing enforcement. We're providing a process for notices of violation, how to serve those notices. We're providing a process for hearings, and then also a process for emergency actions in case it is something that needs to be done very quickly, a process for that. We're also putting together the process for handling the cost, and then providing an option for appealing the decisions that we have as well. So this is another tool for us to use in code enforcement and building department.
Is there any comments or questions from the council? All right, seeing none, do I have a motion?
Motion to approve ordinance 2021-9 on first reading.
Second.
I have a motion made by Councilmember Busque, second by Deputy Mayor Tharp, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, that motion carries five zero. Moving on to ordinance 2021-10. Our first reading tonight, if we have a city clerk, please read the, uh, read the ordinance by title.
Ordinance 2021-10, first reading, amending Section 2-270, definition, non-abolom assessment to include additional sections for demolitions, providing for conflict, severability, codification, and ineffective date.
And once again, we have Director of Building Planning and Engineering, Kara Erwin Ferris.
Thank you. This, uh, the previous ordinance and this one go hand in hand. Ordinance 2021-10 is an amendment to Chapter 2 to add unsafe building abatement demolition, Section 4-5 to our code under definition. Currently in our code, in order to levy, um, when we have costs, the city pays for nuisance abatement, what we can do is levy against properties as a special assessment lien that will be superior to other liens and encumbrances. Currently, it refers to Section 116 of the Florida Building Code, and we're adding Section 4 or 5 of our code uh, so that we could utilize this process for anything associated with that section as well. Thank you.
Are there any comments or questions from, from the council?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve ordinance 2021-10, first reading.
Again.
All right, I have a motion made by Councilmember Pierce, second by Councilmember Noble, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Councilmember Dugo?
Yes.
Okay. That motion carries five zero. All right, tonight we have a discussion item. Uh, we have building safety inspection program that's gonna be led by building official Scott Wood.
Good evening, everybody. Hope everybody had a great weekend. Uh, I don't want to take up too much of your time. I know some of you have, um, you've all had the opportunity to read the draft. I have some copies if you would like it. The Florida League of Cities has put together a committee of all of the building officials in the county. Then they had a working group of nine. West Palm Beach, Boca, Boynton, Wellington, DeCuesta, South Palm, Highland Beach. I was on a committee, and Doug White from the county. So, we've had a lot of discussions. We've had about eight meetings so far. We've talked about program that Broward has, we based ours off of theirs. Some of the major changes that we've had, we changed the timeframe from 40 years to 25 if you're east of 95, and 35 if you're west of 95. The one exception to that is any building that has modified balconies, decks, or elevated walkways. We've made them 25 years also. Uh, one of the concerns is waterproofing and people putting tile on their balconies and like astral turf, carpet, that kind of thing. What that does deteriorates the steel inside the balconies or the wood structure underneath. More likelihood of a, of building collapse, balcony collapses, walkway collapses, things like that. We've increased requirements for electrical inspections. They want to include thermal imaging reports, make sure the, the equipment is not overheating, everything is up to speed. Um, and everything works. Circuit breakers turn on and off, things like that. We've also required that the reports are gonna be turned in to the building departments throughout the county, as well as the condo associations, but we wanna make sure we get them, and we're not being held by the condo associations or whatnot, waiting for them to get back to us. It gives them accountability, we have the reports in our hands. This is gonna affect any building over 3,500 square feet with an occupancy greater than 10. With the exceptions of one or two family homes, accessory structures, um, federal government buildings, county government, municipal government, things like that. What we're, what we're gonna do as far as our process goes, beginning October through December, we will get a list from the county of all the affected buildings, we will notify those people. It's really their responsibility as a property owner to understand that it's required. It's gonna be a courtesy on our part to make sure that we let them know. Uh, from January through March, they'll do their inspections. And then April through September is when all the repairs are gonna be done. We decided on April through September, generally buildings are less occupied. It's, uh, peak season is over with, a lot of people have gone, condos are empty. They might be able to get more work accomplished that way. As far as the staff goes, it's gonna be some moderate impacts to us. We're obviously gonna have a little bit more to do, we're gonna have to track some of these reports, uh, mail them out, receive them back, and just verify the inspections are done. So, it's really all that I have. Um, our goal tonight was, if we have any, if the, if the commission, or council rather, has any comments they would like to take back to the League of Cities, um, we're meeting again on Thursday. They're looking for any discussion from, uh, from our council as far as positives or negatives, or any feedback like that.
Excellent. Uh, are there comments or questions from the council, Councilmember Dugo?
Um, Scott, I have a question. Who is actually gonna send out the first notice to the buildings? Is that the cities or the county?
It's all gonna be done with, by the city.
By the city.
So we'll receive a list.
And then you'll notify?
Yeah. Now, again, that's, we don't wanna be responsible as the only form of notifying them, so we wanna make sure we publish anything that we, we approve very widely so the property owners understand that it's their building, they're responsible. So we're gonna try and reach out to all the condo associations, things like that. Um, it's gonna be shopping centers, all the big buildings, anything like that.
What's the process if you notify, you reach out, maybe publish, I don't know, and you get no response? Who's on the hook? The HOA, us also?
We, we would process that as a code enforcement case. We really would.
Okay.
And go after, the property owner is ultimately responsible. So, and I, we have a, I know there's a draft in there of the proposed ordinance, but it's very small. We haven't, and Kristi and I have really gotta go through that and beef it up. Same thing with, with our commission, we just haven't had the time. We're focusing on getting the program together. Every ordinance is gonna be, there's gonna be 40 different ordinances, basically.
Okay.
But we have a starting point.
Yeah, I saw the article that the league had in the Post regarding this, and so I had questions. Thank you.
To be honest with you, we don't have any really tall buildings.
No.
My bigger concern is we have a lot of older condo buildings. I know people have done work on them. Um, they put carpeting on their patios, on their, on their balconies, things like that. That's just dangerous. You know, I can't imagine sitting on my, out on my balcony and having it just go off from underneath me. And that's really one of my bigger concerns.
Thank you.
Councilmember Noble.
Have you identified any dangerous buildings at this point?
As of yet, no. We haven't gone out to look. We're still, we don't really have any records yet. Once we get an ordinance in place and, and we have our program solidified, it puts us in a little bit better position. I don't wanna open the door to any potential liability on the city until we have something firm to back us up.
Uh, Deputy Mayor Tharp?
With regards to the, the carpet tile on the balconies, is there anything? Cause it sounds, in all honesty, I had no clue that would cause any sort of deterioration. So how can we get out something? Andrea, this might be a better question for you. Some sort of educational piece to, to the residents? Cause if, you know, I'm thinking some of these larger condos, they're, they're not gonna necessarily know what homeowner two years or three years ago did on that balcony if it doesn't exist today. So I guess how do we get out ahead of this, uh, with, with that regards, you know?
Sure. If I can comment one thing on that first, um, what people don't realize, and I was just told this not too long ago, if you're gonna put any flooring on anything above a second floor, above a first floor on a condo, it requires a building permit.
Yep.
And I think people were told or under the impression that they're not needed. The concern, concrete is porous. If you leave bare concrete, water tends to run off, evaporate, dry off, it's not a big deal. You put tile, astral turf, grass carpet, anything like that traps moisture. Moisture has nowhere to go. Um, and the other thing is like windows are a big one because water tends to run alongside of them if they're leaking, which could then rot the structure inside, depending on what it is. Wood framing, you rot the wood, concrete, you'll deteriorate the, uh, concrete over time.
I think from an education perspective, I think our best bet is probably going to be to wait until, um, we have everything passed on our end and we know which direction we're going, and then we can do those educations through social media, through communications to, uh, the HOAs, things like that. You know, we can, we can handle it that way. But I think I'd like to have something in place first before we start an educational campaign on that, so that it, it falls back and it all ties into that ordinance that the council has approved.
Great, thank you.
Councilmember Busque.
Um, it's my understanding that things like balconies are, on condos, are the associations, and associations are responsible for it. So it might be an easier task to, to, um, call it to their attention and give them some of the responsibility.
Well, in, in a condo type building, the condo association is ultimately responsible for the entire building.
Right.
A condo owner only owns what's inside.
I know.
The structure itself is the responsibility of the property owner. Now, we should really educate as many people as we can.
Mm-hmm.
Um, it would be in our best interest to do that, so, um, but the ultimate, the ultimate responsibility for the building is the condo association.
Yeah, and if we're going to send out, ultimately, if somebody doesn't comply, we're gonna send out fines. So who's gonna get fined? The association would have to be fined.
That, that would be correct.
Thank you.
Are there any other comments or questions from the council?
Um, I think it's a great idea that we're working through the League of Cities on this, so that it's one, um, kind of one, huh, I don't, I guess we say, one, one regulation, uh, across the board in all of Palm Beach County, because if each individual municipality starts dictating different things, it could get confusing for the general public. So, I, I think, uh, I'm glad to see that, uh, that we're working on this with, through the League of Cities, so that's, that's my comment.
Our primary focus from the get-go, and a lot, not a lot of people knew about this, um, but our primary focus was, focus was to get our basic plan together without a lot of interruption from, I, I hate to say it this way, but from, from government, not necessarily here, but maybe in the county, maybe, you know, some of the bigger cities, and to come up with one plan. So that everybody has, here's our plan, it's what Broward does, that's what Miami-Dade does. We took a lot of their guidance, that's where the, the 3,500 square feet came from, and, and things like that. But we felt the timeframes were too long, so that's why they're shortened and they're, they're a little bit closer. But that was our, our primary focus, to have one plan for basically 40 different municipalities.
Excellent. Thank you. Any other questions, comments? All right, Mr. Wood, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Could I, could I just ask you, Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Pierce.
Can we get this to go forward? Do we have to?
It'll come before us at some point.
Okay, good.
They're still finalizing it.
Okay, good.
All right, at this point in time, I'd like to open comments from the public for non-agenda items. Anyone wishing to speak, please come forward, state your name and address for the record. All right, seeing none. Uh, moving, uh, on to your city manager's report, City Manager McHugh.
Uh, good evening. Um, I just have a few things to go over. There are a couple of documents that I left at your places prior to the meeting. Uh, the first is, I know we've had some questions regarding the census and what our numbers look like. Um, the information that I provided is, is right now pretty high level information. We don't have a lot of the drill down numbers, but, um, based on what we're seeing, based on what we're pulling from the U.S. Census Bureau, uh, our population for the census that, uh, was effective April 1, 2020 is 43,990, where, uh, the, uh, April 1, 2010 was somewhere around 37,592. So we had a pretty big jump in our numbers. Um, at this time, uh, I know that there's been some discussion, discussion on the merits of redistricting and where we move forward. Once we have that drill down information, we'll be able to get a better idea of what we're doing. Uh, the city has used FAU in the past for that, so, uh, I pulled all that information, and we're just waiting for that information. And I think that the contact that I spoke to at the census is potentially September to November. They don't have an exact date, so we'll keep you posted on that. But this is just something for you to take a look at in advance of that. Um, uh, in addition to that, um, I know that we had discussion on the American Rescue Plan and what our number looked like. Um, preliminarily, it was at the $17.2 million. We did get notification from the state, uh, that our final number for the American Rescue Plan is $20.5 million. So, uh, the city is going to be receiving $20.5 million in American Rescue Plan dollars once we get that agreement from the state. Um, we will get half of the money shortly thereafter, and then, uh, a year from now, we will get the other half of the money, and the money has to be expended, I believe, by 2026. I think it's somewhere around the end of, I think it's earmarked maybe by 2024, but spent by 2026. So, um, we discussed a lot of different things during the budget process as to where we would hope to be able to expend those funds, and we will absolutely, absolutely make sure we continue to have those discussions with you as we move along in the process. But, um, we consider ourselves very fortunate to be able to do some quality of life projects and projects that, uh, are just going to improve a lot of, of things here in the city. So, uh, we're looking forward to that. Um, COVID testing, I understand that while there are, uh, a lot of sites in Palm Beach County that are providing COVID testing, um, we're finding that just based on the number of individuals that are wanting to get tested now, that we're, we're having an issue or there are difficulties with just, um, not being able to, to get in at certain places. The appointment wait is a little longer than it normally would have been. So, uh, our staff is working on something with one of our partners to be able to provide COVID testing at the city, um, every Monday and Thursday, beginning next week. Uh, it will be at the community center, outside of the community center. It will be walk-up, I don't believe it will be by appointment. They will do, um, approximately 100 each day that they're there. So, we'll keep you posted on that, but, uh, we're hoping that we'll be able to start that, not this week, but next week on Monday, and that would be Mondays and Thursdays. Um, as you know, the city, uh, our fire rescue department was offering and providing vaccines to employees, uh, to family members of employees. And I know that, um, you know, we still have available vaccine, uh, and, and our fire chief is sending out those communications to staff for anyone that is not vaccinated at this point or their family members are not vaccinated. Additionally, we have sent some communications to some of our bordering and neighboring municipalities, uh, to be able to offer to their employees as well. We're just trying to get the word out, um, as best we can and try and get as many people vaccinated as we can. The booster, what we have received communications, questions regarding the booster, when there might be some availability on that. Uh, we have not gotten anything directly on that. I know that they're saying that those that'll, that will be first considered are those that are immunocompromised. So, uh, we'll keep you posted on that, should anything come there. And, uh, lastly, uh, the other piece of information that I left at your place was just a reminder, I believe some of you, if not all of you, are planning on attending the, uh, 9/11 Day of Service that we're doing in partnership with the United Way at the community center on September 11th from 9:00 to 11:00, uh, at, again, at the community center. So we're hoping that you can be there, and that flyer has been provided for your information, uh, and reference. That's it, thank you.
Thank you. I have a council member, Noble, has a question.
Uh, related to the testing, uh, uh, two things. One, is there a cost? And two, uh, how long does it take to get the results?
Uh, I don't know the answer regarding the, the how long it takes for the results. I believe they're also doing rapid, but I think that they're doing both. Um, I think one of them is rapid, um, so that would be a pretty quick turnaround. Uh, as far as the cost, no, there is not going to be a cost. For those individuals that have insurance, the insurance would be billed for administration of it, but should you not have it, you would not have to pay.
But if you have insurance, uh, I've checked into this, they, they want you to pay the copay first.
No, this, there would not, there would be, it's my understanding, based on the conversations that our community and recreation services are having with, uh, the, the sponsor, the, the vendor that provides these, is that no, there would not be that copay upfront from the individual getting tested. But we will be sure to, because that was my goal, that if we're going to be offering this, that we're not charging people to give them tests.
That would be quite a fringe benefit.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, related to the boost, booster shot, I assume that would be free also?
Yes, that would be something that once, once we have any kind of directive, once our, our fire chief receives some kind of directive, we would be able to move forward with offering that, understanding that probably those that are immunocompromised would be the first in line to be able to get some type of booster, and then it would go from there.
We got, going back to the testing again, um, you said it would be Tuesdays and Thursdays?
Mondays and Thursdays.
Mondays.
From 10:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. That's what we're working on right now, Mondays and Thursdays from 10:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. We have not finalized everything, but we're hoping that that, um, we'll be able to start next week.
Now, some organizations require you to get tested, you know, once a week or twice in a week and whatnot. Uh, will we have any restrictions related to a person, uh, how many times they get tested?
No, not that I'm aware of, and I think that that's one of the reasons that you're seeing the backlog in testing right now, because there are some employers that if you are not vaccinated, they are requiring you to get tested weekly. And I think that that's probably why we're seeing some of the backup.
I've, I've gone to two of these emergency center locations that we have, and, uh, uh, they both provide that, but they either want, um, you to pay the copay or, and/or pay upfront, uh, something like $75.
Oh, no, that was something, again, I know that the county is offering through the...
The point of bringing is, we are going to be in competition with our, our private enterprises.
Uh, there, there, there are private enterprises that are doing it, but then there are also still, the government is still offering sites as well. Currently, um, the Mid-County Senior Center in Lake Worth, on Lake Worth Road, I believe that's in Palm Springs, they are offering, uh, testing there at no cost. The Library in Palm Beach Gardens is offering testing, and also the South, the South County Civic Center, I'm not really, I forget the name, but the South County, they're offering it as well. So, um, knowing that there probably would be a need and that it seems as though the testing could potentially become difficult, we do have a partner at the city that, um, is an agency that does provide that. And one of the things that I was hoping for was that it wouldn't be a cost, and, and we've been told that if they move forward with it, there wouldn't be a cost.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
I, I have a couple of questions, Andrea. Uh, first of all, how many of our employees are vaccinated? Do we have a percentage?
I don't have a percentage. I would say, you know, rough estimate, maybe 50%, uh, maybe a little closer to 60, but I don't, I don't know. We know how many that, you know, we vaccinated from a fire rescue perspective, and, and granted, that's not the full 50% or, you know, 60%. Some might have gone to other locations and places to get tested, I mean, vaccinated, vaccination. But I would say just a conservative estimate, maybe 50%.
Is that because of HIPAA law, we can't request?
Yes, correct.
Uh, is there, um, I know that there's a lot of private, uh, organization, institutions that are now mandating that their employees get, has, has there been anything like that talked about, uh, at the state level? Uh, or any preemptions from the governor? I know he doesn't want people wearing masks. So my question is, can, can a municipal or government entity mandate their employees to wear masks?
Delray Beaches. Delray Beaches, and they are requiring that all employees are vaccinated by the end of August, or they would have to be tested weekly. And again, I think that you're seeing that other employers are doing the same, but I think from a municipal perspective, I think they might be the only municipality at this point that are, um, that are actually requiring the vaccine. I think others are looking at other options. Some are looking at incentives, some are, some are looking at, um, different things related to, uh, leave where some municipalities are saying if you are fully vaccinated... where some municipalities are saying, if you are fully vaccinated and you test positive for COVID, uh, you will not have to use your sick time. You, you know, that's provided as an incentive that you would be able to use monies from a COVID sick bank that has been established. So, there are different options out there. We've had conversations with Laura Donlin, who is our labor attorney, and we're working through with her on, on the various options that are out there.
Um, I guess this question is for our attorney, but we're, we're not even there to the attorney's report, so uh, I'll warm you up. Uh, do we, would we carry any liability uh, if, if one of our employees is sick or something uh, happened because we didn't mandate? And there were people here, some are vaccinated, some people aren't?
They, they passed some new uh laws at the last session that provide immunity from litigation related to COVID. So, as long as you're following CDC guidelines and, and requiring your employees to follow those guidelines, you have immunity from those types of allegations. Of course, the city always has sovereign immunity. So, for the most part, unless we're negligent, we're not open to being sued over something where someone got sick uh due to COVID.
The funds for the American Rescue Act, Plan?
Mm-hmm.
Um, could those be used to incentivize employees perhaps? And I'm just brainstorming here, a hundred dollars for those that have been vaccinated and those that in the future get vaccinated?
They could be used, those, those American Rescue Plan dollars can be used for COVID-related expenses such as those, yes.
Okay.
And there is a premium pay provision within the, within the rules of the, of the American Rescue Plan dollars.
Okay, I, I would like to request that at the next meeting, under discussion items, we discuss uh, employee vaccination and any incentive program that we might, might be able to uh, to incentivize our employees to protect themselves, protect their families, protect fellow employees, and protect our residents, so.
Okay, we will absolutely add it.
Thank you. All right. Any other questions or questions for uh, City Manager? None, all right. Moving on to our city attorney's report.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I don't have anything to report, but if you have any questions to follow up on, on the COVID issue or anything like that, I'm happy to, to answer those questions.
Excellent. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Uh, for the mayor and city councils' report, I believe I started to my right last time, so I'm gonna start to my left. Councilmember Busque.
I have nothing.
Councilmember Pierce?
Yes, I uh, just want to thank our city manager, Andrew McHugh, the last couple of weeks, some of the issues within the city that you helped me on. And if you would, please, the next time you have your ma, your managers' meeting, your directors' meeting, if you thank Carlos for all his help.
Mm-hmm.
And tonight, I want to thank Chrissy for the half hour of your time going over a few issues.
Absolutely.
Was it exactly thirty minutes?
Yeah, you know, when I take that back, Chrissy was thirty-one.
I'm gonna see the atomized building on that, all right? Uh, councilmember Dugo.
Nothing.
Uh, councilmember Noble?
Nothing.
Councilman, uh, deputy mayor, Thar.
No report.
Uh, for my report, actually, I have another question for uh, City Manager, and you, I'm pretty sure you're not gonna have an answer, but uh, the roof on a church on Jog is still the shingles. I don't see a metal roof. I know that we're in the middle of a pandemic. I thought they exhausted all the extensions. Where are we with that?
Uh, I'm gonna have Kara come up and talk about that, just because I, off the top of my head, they are still required to put the metal roof on, but I forget what the timeframe is on that.
So, um, they're still, they, they still have an active permit. You know, that they have between, six months between inspections to maintain that permit. The last, the, before they could get a CO for the building, they will have to have the correct roof on. They have not asked us, they're not even near that point in the process. I did speak with them. They did get, I think through the Recovery Act, they got money to cover uh, the differences between where they were in the process of construction and where they had to be in order to get another draw on their construction loan. So, they're in the process of doing the work to get to that point, so that they can uh, start drawing on their construction loan again to start moving forward.
How, what was the timeframe before they can request a CO?
They, well, they, we, I mean, they, the project would have to be complete in order for them to request a CO. And there are lots of extensions that are being given through, um, you know, the, the state government for many things, whether, you know, it was for Zika or COVID. And so, they are applying those to the permit as well. So, you know, they're, they are still an active permit. They are still moving forward at a very slow pace.
Well, okay. Uh, councilmember Noble?
Uh, two questions. Uh, this is the church uh, near the canal, which is near Aldi's.
Chicasaw, yes.
Uh, right now, they don't have a metal roof on.
Correct.
Now, why are we insisting? What, what more benefit is the metal roof over the roof that they have? I'm, I'm leading up to whether we should give them-
Sure.
A pass on that.
They'll probably come back to you to request that eventually. They've already asked it of you in the past. If you remember, they tried to come through with the uh, class-three administrative amendment to change the roof. We denied them, because it's actually a downgrade. We did not feel we could approve that administratively. They came to council and they were denied. So, they have to maintain the existing roof. The reason they have the shingles on there is because they were going through the process where they did portions, a little bit of the roof at a time. And because they were doing it that way, they would have to take, they would have to redo large portions. This is part of the reason why I, I would assume their funds haven't held out to their next um, milestone in their construction process. But they asked the building official if they could continue to put the shingles up to protect the base layers of that roof, um, so that they wouldn't have to redo them all over again, which they'd already had to redo portions of that twice. So, they, they know it was temporary, and they came to you, and they were told that you want the metal roof, so they know that that's something they have to accomplish at the end. They have come to speak to us about the possibility of um, putting a timetable on it, um, where they could get a CO and then have a certain amount of time to raise the money to put on the metal roof. So, they'll probably be back before you again.
I, I just want to-
Again, I'm not sure I got my answer. How unsafe is the current roof related to the other roof?
It's not unsafe, it's an aesthetic.
Uh, it, it's just aesthetics or?
I mean, it's a, I would say a metal roof is, you know, it, it's, it's what they proposed to you.
Question, now, how do, how do I make a suggestion that we give them a pass on that and give them approval to keep that roof? Because the building is starting to shape up, I'm gonna tell you. It's starting to look, look okay now.
They'll, 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 and it's my understanding that they are going to submit an application to do just that on their own.
So, I just, just for the record, and I want to state this, this came before the council. We voted against it. I think it sets bad precedence that we have a code and you can do as you wish, and then the, the council will, will look the other way. I think if we do that, it's gonna open a kind of worms where other people do as they wish. They come before council, and then they're gonna say to us, but you did it here. You let them do that. So, I just want to make sure that I'm under record saying that I'm not in favor of that and that we, you know, if we are holding everyone else accountable for the metal roof, because that's what our code calls for, then we, we're consistent across the board. Councilmember Noble?
Uh, I disagree with you, and, and we'll have this debate, I'm sure, when it comes, uh, yeah. Uh, uh, my point is, if it is safe, is it metal roof? Uh, and we know how financially strapped they are. They are a uh, a, a worthy cause, a church. Uh, I'm in favor of reconsidering and, and possibly agreeing that they can keep the current roof. So, that's my point.
Can we get a consensus before we bring this up?
Hold on, we, let's just get, get ourselves, we're, we're doing uh, mayor's and city council's report. I know there's some other comments, so no, no consensus on, on this portion. Uh, let me move over to councilman Pierce, then councilmember Dugo, and then councilwoman Busque.
And, you know, I think you need to mention that councilman Noble, when they submitted their blueprints originally, it called for the metal roof. Peter, are you aware of that?
No, I'm not aware of it, and I don't, I, for me, I'm not sure, that's not my point, okay? My point is slightly different.
Yeah, it, once you submit your blueprints, goes through plan, review, and building department to issue the permit. That's gospel. That's how you gotta build, correct?
Yes, I mean, they can do changes through the process, um, but in this case, what, what the previous building official agreed to is to let them put the shingles on, and he got confirmation that they could put the metal roof right over top of those shingles. They just wanted to have a quick resolution to protect the sheathing and underlayment and everything that they put together. So, it was supposed to be a temporary solution initially.
And, and they receive uh, monies from the government also for assistance?
It is my understanding that uh, they got assistance to get that gap filled between where they were in the construction process and where they needed to be to get the next draw on their construction loan.
Uh, councilmember Dugo?
Here's my question. What percentage, neglecting the roof, what percentage of the church is complete right now? Because, I mean, what else do they need to do?
Well, they need to do the um, the, the paving and parking areas.
Mm-hmm.
Um, they need to do, I, I don't know how far along they are on the interior. Uh, they, but once they get the interior completed, they would have to do the landscaping um, on the, on the uh, outside before they would get to the point where they could probably request any sort of approvals.
And that's, that's kind of my point, is that, you know, we've been looking at this, and I remember when they were at the council, and that church has caused my phone to ring many times. I'm sure everybody here has been in the same position. But I agree with Mr. Noble on this. I mean, if the funds that they have could be used with a deadline date to complete this building, landscaping and all, port-a-potty gone. Um, I would, I would definitely uh, agree that, I mean, the roof, when it was first put on, it was like, ouch! But it's like anything else, after a while, you're looking at it, it's not bad. You're saying it's safe, it's an asphalt shingle roof. So, I'm, I'm not opposed to that, Mr. Noble. I agree with you.
Councilmember Busque?
Um, a couple of things. I'm wondering about the legality of picking and choosing who has to obey the code. Christie?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, if I may respond?
Yes, please.
Um, the, in this scenario, uh, the request was made to change, which is not unusual when they go through development. Um, but we have a process laid out in our code that they have to comply with, and that process brought them here before council. When the council told them no, then they have to comply with their original plans. Until council changes that decision, they have to comply with their plan. So, um, the code allows for these kind of administrative changes to development, but there's a process they have to go through. And so far, they've been denied in that process.
And our code is that they have to have a metal roof?
No.
No.
Uh, they, that is what they proposed as their project. They, the, the elevations and the materials is um, that's what they proposed as, as their materials for the roof and when they did their original um,
It's not code.
Design of it.
Thank you.
Yeah.
All right. Uh, my last question, City Manager McHugh, and Kara, you may, you may want to stay there.
Okay.
Um, there is a stretch of sidewalk that's not completed on fifty-seventh. Uh, I'm assuming that has something to do with the water district?
It does. We, there was, there was um, some discussion we've had with the Lake Worth Drainage District regarding that stretch of land, regarding the fact that it's over uh, the canal, the pipe there, you know? And, and if we would put sidewalk in, does that then mean that we have responsibility for the pipe going forward? Understanding that that pipe is an older pipe. So, we've had some conversation with uh, the Lake Worth Drainage District. We had a meeting a couple of weeks ago. Um, it's our understanding that we're gonna move forward with a request um, to go ahead and put the sidewalk in. But then, based on what the approvals were years and years and years ago, when that pipe was put in, we are going to go back and have some discussions with the entity that was in, I think it was Pine Ridge. It was one of the Pine Ridges that technically put that pipe in. So, there's gonna have to be some conversation, because the city can't take ownership for that pipe just because we're putting a sidewalk in over top of it, because that pipe is very, it, it's old. So, I don't want to assume responsibility for that pipe. And we've been able to get some approvals from the Lake Worth Drainage District to be able to put the sidewalk in and not have responsibility for the pipe, and we will work through the issue related to the pipe.
Can, can we put a sign that says this is not Green Acres' fault? Because, I mean, I'm, I'm getting comments like, what, you guys couldn't just finish the sidewalk?
No, no, it really was a requirement of the Lake Worth Drainage District that we needed to, as part of the process, that we would assume the responsibility for the pipe um, with putting that stretch of sidewalk over, you know, over that canal there. And then it was determined that, wait a minute, we're not going to assume responsibility for having to maintain, put in new piping structures over that stretch of road. So, we have come to a determination that we can go back and take another route to be able to do it, but still be able to put in the sidewalk. So, that is the issue. It really was an issue between the Lake Worth Drainage District, the city, and, and, you know, understanding what was going on with the pipe. And we would not move forward with putting sidewalk in, i, under, just think, knowing that we would have to be responsible for that pipe.
I, I completely agree with what you're saying, but can we do a sign or something diplomatically that says?
Same in Lake Worth Drainage.
Um, no, but seriously, I mean-
We'll come up with something.
Yes, because I-
We'll come up with something.
I, I think people in, in, you know, people mock the situation. The sidewalk, brand-new sidewalk, now all of a sudden, it just ends, there's overgrown grass, and then the sidewalk picks up again. People don't quite understand. I figured it has something to do with the, uh, with the Water Management District.
Yep. Um- We'll, we'll, we'll put something up there, some kind of notification.
Yeah, thank you.
But I think we should probably be pretty close, because this was a few weeks ago that we had the discussion that we could move forward, we could apply.
Even if it's for a day-
But I'll check with our engineer, but I think we're pretty close.
Even if it's for a day and it's foam, please. Uh, just, I think people are curious, or they don't quite understand, but-
Yep.
That, that would be great, thank you. Uh, the last thing I have is, I attended the city, uh, the League of Cities Conference in, in Orlando. It wasn't, uh, it wasn't packed. Uh, I, I did my best to keep my distance from everyone and, and participate in a, in a safe manner. Uh, a lot of good information, there's a lot of things happening uh, with the state, a lot of money coming down also, as you heard from the American Rescue, Rescue Act. Um, so there's a lot of cities that are, gonna be receiving some funds. I, I'm looking forward to uh, to some of the projects that we have, uh, we're, we're considering and looking, looking at. But, you know, I, you know, we, we have to get to some, somewhat to some normalcy, and, and that kind of looks different nowadays. Um, I, I got to experience the League of Cities a little bit different, uh, wearing a mask for the majority of the time. But uh, at the end of the day, I think we all have to do what's right for, for, for ourselves, for our families. Um, but not just our families, but the people that we interact with on a daily basis, whether it's our employees, uh, coworkers, whatever it may be. Uh, but you gotta, we have to do that in a safe manner. And um, it's, it's great. Um, I saw concerts over the, uh, over the weekend, fully packed, nobody wearing a mask. I'm pretty sure not everybody in that crowd was vaccinated, so um, you know, I'm just, I guess what I'm, what I'm trying to say is, everybody, and, and I wish this, kind of wish, and I guess I don't wish it at the same time, but that there are more people here, although we don't want them here, because we have to be socially distanced. But uh, spread the word, tell people to, you know, we're, we're back in, in COVID mode, and we have to protect each other. Every day since school started, which has been, it's gonna be a week tomorrow, my school has sent me an email telling me that somebody tested positive at the high school, every day so far. So, COVID is still going around, I still, I'm still lis, you know, hearing people are, are passing away. Uh, so take, take precaution out there. That's all I have for the mayor's report. Do I have a motion to adjourn? Motion to adjourn. Have a second?
Second.
Means adjourned.